Madam Clerk.
This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 10:4-6 et sec, notice of which was sent to the record and the Star Ledger and was posted on the municipal bulletin board.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino is absent. Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Would everybody please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a free republic, for which it stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. There are no minutes to approve. We have a couple proclamations which we're going to give out this evening. The first one, I'm going to be giving out to all the folks and students from SOAR. I see them here. Welcome. Would you guys like to come up? Everybody from SOAR, please. You guys ready? SOAR has been mobilized to reduce underage drinking by youth, and whereas steering out alcohol responsibly promotes healthy choices among youth and adults. And where steering out alcohol responsibly can influence public policy and legislation affecting youth, adults, and families, and whereas steering out alcohol responsibly connects all elements of society to struggle against underage drinking. Therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and council of the City Packers Act has that all the residents of the community join us in supporting steering out alcohol responsibly as it works to reduce underage drinking. Now therefore, I, John P. LaBrus Jr., Mayor of the City Packers Act, with other members of the city council, do hereby proclaim April as an alcohol awareness month in the City of Hackensack. Congratulations, guys. You guys did a great job this year. To you.
Actually, why don't we address this?
You worry about keeping your teeth in. Free stuff.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Abby? Did you get a pen?
No.
Okay. At this time, we have another proclamation to give out, which will be given out by Councilman Sims, who also is our police commissioner. It's all yours, Dave.
I want to give this proclamation to Officer Victor Vasquez. Officer of the mayor of the City of Hackensack, whereas the City of Hackensack desires to bestow upon Police Officer Victor Vasquez this proclamation and recognition of his outstanding police work, and whereas Officer Victor Vasquez started his career in Newark in 2008, then was hired by the Bergen County Police Department and became a citizen, City of Hackensack Police Officer in November, whereas Officer Vasquez was on patrol and came upon a crowd gathered around an unconscious woman and then performed CPR on an unconscious woman who then began breathing on her own and was transported to Hackensack Hospital. Whereas Officer Vasquez continued on patrol, stopping a vehicle on Central Ave, and along with the assistance of another police officer, arrested a suspect in a previous robbery, and whereas Officer Vasquez, while on patrol, the next day helped a felony officer apprehend a fleeing suspect and seized 250 bags of heroin. Now therefore, I, David Sims, along with John P. Jr., Mayor of the City of Hackensack, along with the members of the city council, dear hereby congratulate Police Officer Victor Vasquez for his devotion and commitment for his job as a city police officer. Presented the 21st day of April.
It's a busy couple days here. Do you want to take a group picture? Good, thanks, appreciate it. Anthony?
Yes. Please, Director. Mike?
Director. Lieutenant.
Also, if anything to say. Say something.
I just want to add a little something to the proclamation as far as Officer Vasquez goes. He is a new addition to our police department. He's already showing his dedication not only to the police department but to the citizens of Hackensack, and I thank him for that. But I also want to point out that he is a reflection of the entire police department. What you heard him do today is what our officers are doing every day out on the street. They're out there, they're motivated, they're proactive, they're stopping suspicious people that they see. They're really putting a real effect on our crime rate in Hackensack. It's down from last year significantly. A lot of the burglaries have been reduced because of the proactive policing of our uniform patrol officers, and they're doing a great job out there. But this is a perfect example of what our officers are doing, and I want to congratulate Officer Vasquez.
Okay. Anybody, before we go into the city manager's report, have anything to say? No? Dave? Nope. Okay, let's move forward. City manager's report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to congratulate everybody, all the kids, from the members of SOAR, did an outstanding job, and also Patrolman Vasquez. When I spoke to the director last week about this, I said, "Well, where is he? I'd like to talk to him." He's like, "I've been looking for him all day. Arrested somebody else, now he's on eighty chasing somebody down the highway." So credit to the entire department, the director, everybody for doing an outstanding job. We appreciate everything you guys do. For an update on what's going on in the city, we had a Project Pride/Department Head meeting last week, and now with the weather warming up, we're really trying to enforce broken sidewalks that can be done during the wintertime, painting of trim houses, trash that's been left that was covered with snow. Certain things were brought to my attention, the railroad trestles we cleaned up this week. You're going to start seeing more and more, as time goes on each week, violation notices being given, warning notices first, and then violation notices, because we're really trying to make Hackensack a better place, especially on the gateways when you come in. We're doing the best we can. I know a member of the community got in touch with the New Jersey Division of Transit and had them clean up by Hudson Street when you come in, cut the big trees down, get rid of all the rubbish and everything else, and we're trying to do the best we can to upkeep it. It's very important. This week, the mayor, myself, Councilman Pataglia, had the honor to go to the opening of the Police Youth Academy, which was great. On Monday morning, we saw about 100 kids, disheveled, tired, just trying to come together to make it through the first half hour, hour of the morning, and Thursday night, we went to their graduation. And it was a credit to not only our police department, but I think it was Rochelle Park, Maywood, and South Hackensack to help participate, and also our fire department. They had the kids going down the rope by the firehouse from the second story down to a big mat, and you saw in four short days, it's such a huge difference, the teamwork, the dedication. So I thank everybody that was involved in that, because it was a huge success, and I think everybody had a lot of fun with it. So I think it's just good to share with the community some of the things that happen here that you don't know about every day. We have the summer rec program registration starting April 28th. It's going to go from April 28th to the deadline of June 23rd, 6/23, so make note of that. You can go on the website or stop at the rec center. The next thing I was going to talk about was Officer Vasquez, but I thought I should do that first. Like I said, outstanding job, and director, great job with the department. Slam dunking the junk, we're having on April 26th, rain or shine. We have a flyer that we put out that we're going to do on Saturday, 26th, the job is brewing 270 Main Street next to Johnson Public Library. Groups check in for coffee in the morning. We're giving out gloves and trash bags will be available. Depends upon the tools you need for the project, and we'll help you out. It's basically Hackensack's spring cleanup. From 10 to 12 noon, we have joined a group of friends and neighbors to clean up Hackensack. We have friends of Borgwood, Mercy Community Church, St. Anthony of Paddywood Church, Boy Scout Troop Pack Number Five, the Bergen County Probation Department, Hackensack High School Going Green Club, Hackensack High School Marching Band, FDU Green Team, Hackensack Middle School, Girl Scouts of Hackensack, SOAR, New Jersey Transit. From 12 to 1, we have at the Hackensack Elks Lodge at 37 Linden. You can park in the right lane to walk across the street for an Earth Day picnic barbecue. So I invite everybody to come out. We really appreciate it, and I think it's good and it's invigorating for Hackensack. On the next item, potholes. We have two crews working, and we actually brought another truck on because the tilt con's been so backed up getting asphalt, so there's no downtime. We've been running three trucks all day long to keep both crews going. We know the streets are terrible. There's some potholes all over the place, some areas we've done twice because the coal patch came out from earlier in the winter, but we ask for your patience. We're doing everything we can to accommodate everyone. I'd like to also thank the city manager in Lodi. We spoke the other day, called them up, and we negotiated an inter-local agreement. We're going to split the cost to repave Porter Drive next to Chit Chat Diner. They originally thought it wasn't their responsibility after three conversations, and so the city manager was kind enough to work it out with us, so I want to thank him and the city of Lodi for working with us. That's going to be done, hopefully, within the next 30 to 45 days. It's been patched. We patched the entire street to help out the Chit Chat and the other neighbors, and now we're going to pave the entire road. We've also entered negotiations to pave all of Prospect. There's a few things going on right now that I really can't share yet because this is part of the negotiation process, but paving all of Prospect is a little bit under $800,000. We're trying to come up with money because it does not qualify for any grants, does not qualify for a community grant, so we're trying to work out something with a few local, I won't say businesses, but institutions, to see if they will cooperate with us to help us out there, because we've been patching Prospect, and we know it has some troubled areas. At the last meeting, we talked about the flooding issue and what we did down by Hudson. The final section of pipe was cleaned out today, and I believe they finished today, if not tomorrow. They had an issue with United Water, which has been resolved, and at the last meeting, a few people identified other areas in the city, which we're going to move on to next week. I talked to our project manager and our DPW superintendent, and we're going to look into these other areas that have flooded over the years that have never been cambered or checked out, because when they do flood, silt tends to get into the pipes and reduces the flow. So if it could give some type of relief, and we could do it, we got that partial grant that came in, which we have to match around 55, 45, I believe it is. We could potentially use some of that money to help relieve that problem. So we are working on that, and that is moving forward, and it has seemed to give us some relief when I talked to the people on Hudson. So far, so good. I think we're heading in the right direction. We're also looking at alarming the pump stations. If for some reason a pump goes down, the police station will be notified so that we could take immediate action to make sure that we don't have a backup. And last but not least, we had the First Snow Committee meeting today for just department heads, and the police department was there as well to talk about some of the main issues. There's a pad on the, I believe it's on a table on the shelf, I'm sorry, by the clerk. If anyone's interested in adding your name, if you put on a mailing list, or for verse 911, please put your phone number on there or your contact information if you're interested in being on the snow committee. We're looking for people that either have experience in it or valuable input toward helping to make it better for next year. Last year was probably the worst that I can remember, but on top of that, though, we're only looking to make it better, but I give credit to everybody, DPW, sanitation. I think they all did an outstanding job. Could we do better? Could always do better, but in spite of everything that happened, I think we could tweak it a little bit better next year for the parking situation, for going curb to curb. Salt was challenging, but we actually wound up having more salt than any other municipalities are trying to come to us to get salt. So I want to give credit and thanks to everyone who participated in the meeting and helped last year with the snow removal, because I think they did a great job. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Before we move forward, the students, you're welcome to stay, but I know it's a school night. If you guys want to leave, it's up to you. You going to stay?
They're staying.
Okay, good deal. Glad to have you. Okay. Resolution 154-14, it's the first one. It's an ordinance.
The final adoption of ordinance number 12-2014, an ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank as of NJSA 40A:4-45.14. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
May I have a motion, please, open this to the public?
Offered.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. At this time, anybody who would like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come to the podium, give your name and address to the clerk. Seeing none, motion to close to the public, please.
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Okay, now we need a motion for the ordinance itself.
May I have a motion, please, for this ordinance?
Offered.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Okay, now we need a motion for the ordinance itself.
May I have a motion, please, for this ordinance?
Offered.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved by the city council of the City of Hackensack County of Bergen and State of New Jersey that ordinance number 12-2014 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Okay. Resolution 155-14?
Is the final adoption of ordinance number 13-2014, an ordinance amending Lot C redevelopment plan. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
May I have a motion, open this ordinance to the public, please?
Offered.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Okay, now we need a motion for the ordinance itself.
May I have a motion, please, for this ordinance?
Offered.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved by the city council of the City of Hackensack County of Bergen and State of New Jersey that ordinance number 12-2014 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Okay. Resolution 155-14?
Is the final adoption of ordinance number 13-2014, an ordinance amending Lot C redevelopment plan. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
May I have a motion, open this ordinance to the public, please?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Anybody who would like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please step forward to the podium, give your name and address to the clerk. Seeing none, may I have a motion to close this ordinance to the public, please?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. May I have a motion on this, please?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved by the city council of the City of Hackensack County of Bergen and State of New Jersey that ordinance number 13-2014 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 156-14?
Is a final adoption of ordinance number 14-2014, an ordinance authorizing the sale of certain property, block 308.01, Lot 3, commonly referred to as Lot C, owned by the City of Hackensack County of Bergen, New Jersey, not required for public purposes pursuant to NJSA 40A:12-13 et sec. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
May I have an offer to open this to the public, please?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Anybody who would like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please step up to the podium, give your name and address. Seeing none, can I please have a motion to close to the public?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. May I please have a motion on this ordinance, please?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved by the city council of the City of Hackensack County of Bergen and State of New Jersey that ordinance number 14-2014 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Okay, resolution 157-14, please.
This is the final adoption of ordinance number 15-2014, a bond ordinance providing for Atlantic Street Park improvements buy-in in the City of Hackensack in the County of Bergen, State of New Jersey appropriating $650,000 therefore and authorizing the issuance of $617,500 worth of bonds or notes of the city to finance part of the costs thereof. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for public hearing.
May I have a motion, open this to the public, please?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
No.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
This is for public hearing.
This is to the public hearing.
Okay, I'm sorry. Aye. I was ready to go.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. At this time, anybody who would like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please step forward, give your name and address to the clerk.
Kathleen Salvo, 184 Hudson Street. I think we should table this. I don't think we heard from Mr. Chase, and maybe because nobody knows there's a meeting today, because it's Monday, and usually our meetings are scheduled for Tuesday. And like I said earlier at the meeting that preceded this, I'm not in favor of this. I think that money could be spent for the kids of Hackensack in a different park area, not to have another park, basically because there's three parks within two-block radius. We have the green, we have Union Street, and we have the park that St. Sinsari set aside on the corner of Essex Street and Main Street. So I think it's all parked out, the whole area, and I think the money could be better spent on a different thing, and I think it's not friendly that we're taking this area away from the attorneys that have been there for so long and have used that for their parking and have chosen to stay in Hackensack and to support Hackensack as taxpayers. And I really think that, I don't know, if it has to do with redevelopment, I might be for it at another time, but right now, when there are three parks in that immediate area, I'm not in favor, and I think it should be tabled until we do hear from the attorneys on Atlantic Street. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only?
You've got 304 Clinton Place. If I read correctly in the paper, this little park is going to cost us about $800 and some thousand dollars.
Total, some of it is grant, yes, there is grant money involved.
So it's going to be about $600 and change in bonds?
Mm-hmm.
The total's $600.
And then there's going to be a grant for $200 and change.
The total's, the total cost is $600.
Total cost to us is $600, yes.
And we'll get $265 in grant money.
What exactly is going into this park?
The park is, if I may?
Oh, yeah, that's a question.
The park is actually part of, in the rehabilitation plan, it calls for green areas, such as parks, and open space areas as part of the rehabilitation plan. That in conjunction with the cultural arts building going to be there, we felt this was a good place to go hand in hand with it.
No, 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 not why is there going to be a park there.
Why?
Not why, that's the why.
Yes.
But what exactly is going into this park? Because for $600 to $800 some odd thousand.
Right now, it's a parking lot.
I know what's there. I'm very well aware.
It's going to be...
And I'm also very well aware of what the size of this area is.
It's going to be made into a green with a ban shell-type small stage landscaping. We're redoing all the parking in the area. We're really not losing, I don't have the exact figures with me right now, the amount of parking.
It just seems like demo of a parking lot, putting in a little stage and some green. It's not a huge area we're talking about. We're spending $600,000 of taxpayer money. We, whether you want to look at it as bonds or grants, either way, it's coming out of a taxpayer, whoever that taxpayer is, their pocket. And we're doing it for not that large of an area. I also tend to agree with Ms. Salvo that a park isn't really needed in this area, but be that as it may, you've got redevelopment going on. You're talking about, potentially talking to other developers about helping with the cost of Prospect Avenue. I mean, the LTAC debate is not exactly completely final yet. I would wait on paving Prospect to, if it gets remanded back for reasonable conditions, you can try to get some money out of that developer, because something's going to go on that property, whether it's an LTAC or not. Something's going there. You've got other development that's going to be going on on Main Street. Is the park needed today?
Is it needed today?
Developers will give you money to build a park.
Well, we're not just looking at this park. We're looking at other improvements to the city. I mean, I understand what you're saying. We could hold out and try to get them to pay for this park, or we could hold out and try to get them to pay towards a community center for the children and the seniors. I mean, it all depends on how you look at it. We had this building. The plan was part of the rehabilitation plan. This came about through the rehabilitation plan to put this park in as an open space green area. I still like the idea of it. I think in part of rehabilitation plan, having open space areas and green areas for people to go and sit during the day, it's not just, this won't be just used for concerts, per se, like it was mentioned before, four or five times a year. This is an open space that's going to be used every day by people visiting the area. We're trying to spruce up the area. Right now, it's just an asphalt jungle parking lot, and it really would not, I mean, this would be a great benefit to the Cultural Arts Center also as far as aesthetics and making that area look better. There's no doubt about it. As far as parking for the attorneys, we've put a plan in place where they don't lose any spots whatsoever, and that's part of the plan.
Lots of parks, I mean, it's a business area. Beautification is one thing. A park, you really think all the residents of Main Street and South State or State Street
As far as parking for the attorneys, we've put a plan in place where they don't lose any spots whatsoever, and, uh, that's part of the plan.
Lots of parks, I mean, it's a business area. Beautification is one thing. A park, you really think all the residents of, of Main Street and South State or, of State Street are coming to sit in this park? I mean, it's, it's not the movies, you know, I, the, the people of Main Street aren't going with it.
Main Street as you see it now, no. Main Street as we plan it to be, yes, I think so. Thank you, Mr. Governor.
Jason Nunamacher, two thirty-five Prospect Avenue. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I mean, similar to what Ms. Salvo and Mr. Gelber have indicated, has any thought been given to take this six hundred thousand dollars and dedicate it towards Prospect Avenue repaving? Mr. Rotino just said that's going to cost about eight hundred thousand dollars.
Well, the grant money itself wouldn't be available to that, no.
No, I understand, but the total cost to us, as, as Mr. Rotino, uh, told Mr. Gelber, was approximately six hundred thousand dollars.
Correct.
That's about three-fourths, or seventy-five percent of the new park.
There was, no, that we haven't, because this was part of the, the process of the rehabilitation plan, and it was hand in hand with that, we didn't give that any thought, to be honest with you.
Well, can, maybe take Ms. Salvo's suggestion and, and rethink about that, because Prospect Avenue is a disaster.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of streets that are a disaster.
I, I understand, but, you know, Prospect Avenue is, is one of this town's busiest streets.
Absolutely.
I mean, I don't have to tell you the, the amount of taxes that we, we pay up there on Prospect Avenue. Um, I just think maybe we should just rethink about this park right now, considering the abundance of costs needed for these streets.
What I'll do is I'll put it out for a, a vote to the council whether they want to table this for more discussion. Take a roll call, please.
This is for a motion to table, or just?
Close public? Close public.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll turn this to the public first.
Anybody else from the public? Seeing none, have a motion to close the public?
Hang on.
Offered.
Second.
Councilmember Pataglia.
We're going to table, right?
No, you're going to vote, no, to close to the public.
Close to the public.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. At this time, I'd like a vote to table this from the council, please. Whether they'd like to table this to the next meeting?
Motion.
You have a motion, please?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
This is the motion to table it.
Right.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. All right, we'll table this to the next meeting. Resolution one fifty-eight dash fourteen.
Is a resolution for a final adoption of ordinance number sixteen dash two thousand and fourteen, a bond ordinance providing for various road improvements, buy-in in the city of Hackensack in the county of Bergen, State of New Jersey, appropriating eight hundred thousand dollars therefore, and authorizing the issuance of seven hundred and sixty thousand bonds or notes of the city to finance part of the costs thereof. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
May I have a motion, please, to open to the public?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. At this time, anybody would like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please step forward, give your name and address to the clerk, please? Seeing none, a motion to close to the public?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
And a motion for the resolution.
Have a motion on this ordinance, please?
Offered.
Second.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack County of Bergen and State of New Jersey, that ordinance number sixteen dash two thousand and fourteen has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Okay, resolution one fifty-nine fourteen.
Is the final adoption of ordinance number seventeen dash two thousand and fourteen, a capital ordinance of the City of Hackensack in the county of Bergen, New Jersey, authorizing an ordinance for the improvement of Pulaski Park and appropriating a hundred and ten thousand dollars, and providing for that such sum so appropriated shall be raised from the General Capital Improvement Fund of the City of Hackensack. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
May I please have a motion to open to the public?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. At this time, anybody who'd like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please step forward, give your name and address to the clerk. Seeing none, a motion to close to the public?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. May I please have a motion on this ordinance, please?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack County of Bergen and State of New Jersey, that ordinance number seventeen dash two thousand and fourteen has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution one sixty dash fourteen.
This is an introduction of ordinance number eighteen dash two thousand and fourteen, an ordinance amending section one seventy dash seventy, entitled Schedule Twenty-One, Parking Meter Zones of Part Two, entitled General Legislation of the City of Hackensack Municipal Code.
May I have a motion on the introduction of this ordinance, please?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance eighteen dash two thousand and fourteen as introduced does now pass on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on May sixth, two thousand and fourteen, at eight o'clock PM, or as soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council, and at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution one sixty-one fourteen. Dash fourteen, sorry.
This is a resolution authorizing the issuance of requests for qualifications for professional services for consulting municipal engineer to the city of Hackensack.
May I have a motion on this resolution?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution one sixty-two dash one four.
Is a resolution authorizing tax refunds.
May I have a motion on this, please?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution one sixty-three dash fourteen.
This is a resolution authorizing a refund for the Hackensack Junior Volleyball Registration Fee.
May I have a motion, please, on this resolution?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution one, oops, sorry.
One six four, forty.
Resolution one sixty-four dash fourteen.
Is the appointment of James A. Mangan as the qualified purchasing agent.
May I have a motion, please?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution one sixty-five dash fourteen.
Is a resolution authorizing the city manager, Anthony Rotino, as a signatory on Treatment Works approval permit for two ninety-five Polyfly Road, block one oh one, lots one through ten.
May I have a motion, please, on resolution one sixty-five dash fourteen, please?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution one sixty-six fourteen.
Is an emergency temporary appropriation prior to the adoption of the budget per NJSA forty A colon four dash twenty.
May I have a motion on the, uh, emergency temporary appropriation, please?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution one sixty-seven dash fourteen.
Is a resolution authorizing raffle licenses, um, both of them are for Holy Trinity Roman Catholic Church.
May I have a motion, please, on these raffles?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution one sixty-eight dash fourteen.
Is a resolution proclaiming Thursday, April twenty-fourth, two thousand and fourteen, Take Your Sons and Daughters to Work Day.
May I have a motion, please?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution one sixty-nine dash fourteen.
Is a resolution authorizing a leave of absence without pay for three months for Ivana Ferdinand, clerk typist bilingual, beginning October's, I'm sorry, April seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen, and ending July eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen.
May I have a motion, please?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution one seventy dash fourteen, payment of the bills.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack that the bills in the following accounts be and, and are hereby ordered paid. The current fund is two million, four hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and eight dollars and forty-one cents, um, with the total expenditures being four million, five thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eighty cents, and the inter funds and transfers are two hundred and ninety-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars and sixteen cents.
May I have a motion to pay the bills, please?
Offered.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Okay, that's it for that. May I have a motion to open to the public, please?
Offered.
Second.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Okay, before I open to the public, um, just ask that everybody be civil. Uh, you, everybody gets five minutes, all right? And again, just ask that everybody be civil. I'd also like to say at this time, there's been a lot of chatter about, going on about our, uh, about Mr. Amorato, and I just want to be known at this time that the deputy mayor and myself, um, will no longer, well, not no longer, we will be writing our own press releases from now on, we won't be using Mr. Amorato as far as press releases, just so you know that at that time. I'm not going to go into any of the further detail on that, take it for what it is, and at this time, I open the meeting to the public. If you'd like to say something, come up to the podium, give your name and address to the clerk. Good evening. How are you?
I, Alexis Palinkas, P-A-L-I-N-K-A-S, two thirty-five Prospect. I, I had a major statement, however, uh, maybe you could clarify for me. Prospect now may be repaved? Is this what I heard?
We're working on it.
I hope this is what I heard.
Go ahead, Mr. Manager. Go ahead, Mr. Manager.
That's what we're working on. We bid it out about a week and a half ago, and we've been trying to negotiate with some other groups to help participate to cover the cost, because it's not covered by any grant monies whatsoever.
Okay, because two months ago, when I had asked about, I mean, the pothole situation, it was horrible. Now, it's patched, still a washboard, really, really still horrible. And I would assume that you probably have, had gotten a lot of phone calls from the residents, that's, thousands of people live on that street. And I, I would assume that that perhaps figured into, because you had said there was no way it would be done two months ago, and now this is, this is wonderful to hear.
I never talked about Prospect.
Maybe the mayor did, because you talked about doing it in sections.
Well, right, it wasn't on this year's schedule for paving.
Right.
At that time. No, it wasn't. That's correct.
Okay, but now it looks like.
There's a possibility. We're working on it.
I, I would certainly hope so, because again, as I say, the volume of traffic, the emergency services that use that street, thousands, thousands of residents. As a matter of fact, does anybody know what percentage of the population of Hackensack lives on Prospect and Overlook?
I'm not sure of the exact.
About 11,000 people.
Pardon?
About 11,000 people.
That's.
About 70%.
That's about 25%, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's really amazing for a street to be in such horrible condition with that many people who live there, and not for nothing. My, my building and the building next door to me pay a million dollars in taxes. I mean, you know, this is something that I really think, again, with the emergency services, okay, thank you, that's, that's good. Now, I do have a question, though. Oh, when that, or maybe even before, since it may be a while till something happens. Thank you to the Hackensack Police Department. They've been monitoring, there are certain factions, some of the buildings that, that are on that street, where they, even though it's no parking signs, no parking zones, people still park there, especially between Central and about the White Hall. And I've seen the police have been coming out and have been ticketing the people. Doesn't seem to matter to them, but if you would continue, please continue doing that. And last year, you had restripped, nice bright yellow, no parking stripes that helped. With the winter, the way it's been, the stripes are gone, so maybe when you come out and do your striping, if you could make that very clear, that it's, it's a no parking area. And also, if you could, I, I'm very confused about the meeting schedule. What, what, isn't there a calendar that has specific meetings for the council? I mean.
Yes, yes, there is. And what had happened here was a combination of the election night and, and the holiday was, we ended up changing it. We couldn't change it to Wednesday. We were going to change the meeting to Wednesday, but because of the election, the school board election, we couldn't do it, so we made it a combined meeting on Monday night. We realized it after the fact, and when it was made.
All right, so nor, normally, though, council meetings are which night?
Well, there's a council hall meeting once a month on a Monday night.
Okay, public.
Well, no, council hall is a totally separate meeting. We had that at 6:30 this evening.
Right, that I know.
And one, one time a month, that's followed on a Tuesday night by your council meeting, and then there's a combined night of, like, tonight, actually, where they're combined.
And that would also be Tuesday, or that wouldn't be Tuesday?
They're usually on Tuesdays, yes.
Tuesdays, so normally, Tuesday is the night.
Correct.
Tuesday's the night.
Right.
Okay, and could you just explain the parking meter? I, I didn't understand that ordinance. You're, what, what are you doing? The, the times that you have to put money in the meters is being extended from nine to nine?
The times are being changed, along with, Anthony, you want to, you're probably better off explaining it than I am.
Yeah, we have a, a parking expert that the city hired to rectify the parking, to balance it out, because in certain areas, we, we have, we have a parking utility, and we had one parking enforcement officer that was running two tickets a day for the most part. So when the parking expert got on board, he ran around the city, because in certain areas, you're only supposed to park for two hours. And, you know, so people can shop, and then somebody else can take the spot and everything else. So that's enforcing that changing of the limiting times, like to two or three hours, I believe it is. I think it's 25 cents for either 15 minutes or a half hour, depending upon where you're at, and that's what that's establishing.
Right, but what about the time thing? There was one thing about nine to six, and then nine to nine.
I have to look at it, because he changed a few different areas in the city with our park, with our director of parking utility.
And does it really have to be 25 cents for a half hour? I mean, other towns, you could park for 10 cents. I mean, I think that our meters are kind of overpriced.
If anything, I think they're, personally, I think that might be underpriced, but, yes.
If, if Main Street gets one way, will there be, parking will be eliminated on Main Street?
No, no.
Really? All right, well, if you could find the answer about that, I didn't.
I figure you'd give it after the meeting?
Maybe.
Or could you leave, Mrs. Plank, just leave your name and address on this, on this piece of paper right here?
My name is John Matos. I'm the president of the Hackensack Heart Club, and I have a special invitation for the mayor and the council.
Okay.
And I want to make sure that you receive it. There is a problem. I tried to email some of you personally, and it came back server not working correctly. I think there's a problem there. I would like someone to please check it. That's the reason I'm here tonight. So I have the personal invitation, which I'll give to.
Okay, great. If you could give it to the city manager, he'll make copies and get them.
There's two issues that I want to talk about. One is that I thank you very much for giving us the M&amp;M Building for our senior citizens to do there Tuesday, 10 to 2, and they'll be coming. We had a rough winter, five months, we didn't do anything. We do have this special show that we'd like you to have for the city and for the community on April 26th and 27th, from 12 noon to 5:00 PM. And also, we have, the Hackensack Heart Club has been connected with Wallington Senior Citizens, which we're providing a service to them, we paint for them, as well, part of the Hackensack Heart Club. We came back into Hackensack through that building, 39 Broadway, the one over in South Hackensack, and the M&amp;M Building. And I understand from Greg's, Greg, the manager from 102 State Street, where you'll be having extra activities, the park in the back. We look forward to seeing that. I think that's very supportive to the senior citizens and the people coming in, especially on the arts. We are trying to help the city, help the community, understand that we're here, we're available. Communication on the press has not been very good. We took some action about that recently, and I think you're going to see a little bit more of a growth with the senior citizens supporting Hackensack and the city of Hackensack. The theme of this particular art show is going to be imagination, City of Hackensack Cultural Center at South Hackensack. So I want to thank you very much for the facilities and the support you have given us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Anthony, could you get us copies of that, please, in our package? Thank you. Good evening.
Jason Lettermacher, 235 Prospect Avenue. First, let me commend the Kids of Sore. It's a, it's a great organization, and I think it's wonderful that the city took some time tonight to recognize them. Officer Vasquez is a credit to our community, and since he's brand new, I'm, I'm glad he's going to be here then for a lot more years.
Still pretty young.
I was on a, a committee of our Board of Education and met with Mr. Mardaga and Sergeant Avasia regarding the youth academy. And I'm glad to see that it, it went, it ran very well. We met for probably about two hours about logistics, and it's a great thing for the, for the city and for the kids. My final question, Mr. Mayor, to, to follow up on what you had indicated about Mr. Amorado, can you at least tell us if he's, if him or my associates is still a paid city vendor?
Yes, he is.
Okay, if he's not writing press releases, can you tell us what he's doing for the?
I didn't say he's not writing press releases. I say he's not writing my press releases.
So is he?
Or Mrs. Canestrino's.
Is he, is he still writing press releases on behalf of the city?
Yes.
Is there any reason why you would elect him not to write your press releases, but we're still paying him?
Personal, personal reason, and I can't go into it, only because of the situation involved.
And, and what is the situation involved?
Well, the situation involved is what, the article in the paper, that there was, some looking into him, working for the county.
Is, is the city part of a lawsuit?
No, not at all. And I don't believe the city has any liability in this.
Thank you.
Richard Salt in Hackensack, New Jersey. Want to go back over the subject of attorney's fees. Couple of meetings ago, I believe Mr. Scrivo was here, and he proclaimed that finally Hackensack had not to exceed built into its attorney professional service contracts. Histor, for historical accuracy, anytime a professional service contract is awarded by you, there's already a not to exceed figure, because your CFO has to encumber the funds, and he has to have a number. So there always was a not to exceed figure, so the wheel was not reinvented. And speaking of not to exceed, Mayor, September of 2013, our distinguished city attorney's firm was hired and not to exceed $200,000. By my totals, I'm only through January, they're up to $330,000, as the council planning on extending retroactively the not to exceed figure.
Well, first, Mr. Salt, I'd have to see your numbers and check them against ours to.
Well, let's get into that. And I'm sorry, Mrs. Canestrino's not here tonight. The so-called flat rate that is now in effect with respect to the city attorney's firm, I'm not accusing anybody of wrongdoing or playing fast and loose, but there's a lot of murmuring. I'm sorry, I'm losing my concentration.
Please quieten, quieten the audience, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
What I did is I, I opened from, from, from the city clerk, I was looking for resolutions regarding awards of special litigation appointments to the city attorney's firm, because I was told litigation is not the same as being city attorney.
Correct.
I was told no such documents exist, which just bolters my point, that the city attorney gets work, because the city attorney is the city attorney, and keeps the business of cases that they want, and that's because they're city attorney. Now, with respect to the flat rate, I would like you to consider the following. If you look in, and I'm only up to January, suddenly, these two di, these two items are no longer considered part of the city attorney general performance. Mr. Gelber's Oprah request, $2,190. That's no lo, uh, open public record requests, $3,435. So if you take things out of what should, and, and if anybody seriously says that Oprah is not an ongoing concern of every municipal attorney in the state of New Jersey, I would take great issue with them, and I'm sure you recognize that.
Correct.
So you can take a lot out of what is within the general duties of a city attorney, a municipal attorney anywhere, and, and call them litigation, but they're not. It's a shell game. They're up, they're averaging, they're on a pace for the $600,000 a year. They're a fine firm, taking nothing away from their talents, but you're paying top dollar, and don't kid yourself about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salt, and I will look into exactly what you just said about the Oprah request.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rodriguez, how are you?
Hi, good evening. Francisco Rodriguez, 300 Clinton Place. You know, last meeting I attended, I've seen the others on the internet, but last meeting I attended, you know, Ms. Greenman made the statement that you all are respectful to everyone, and the, and I, you know, I got to take issue with Ms. Greenman's email, the, back from October 11, 2013, that was written to Mr. Rotino and Mr. Amorado was copied, talking about two then-city employees, Mr. Loicono, the then-city manager, and Ms. Heck, the then-city clerk, where she refers to Ms. Heck as, quote, "Debbie is brazen and stupid", and then proceeds to go on to talk about Ms., that Ms. Heck and Mr. Loicono are compiling their own dossiers on you, on all of you on the council, and then referring to them as being like two coiled snakes. Quote, "Two coiled, like two coiled snakes. You may give them food and keep them warm. They will strike you nevertheless, given a chance. That's their nature", close quote. First, I don't know how that's respectful, and that kind of email, the, and to the extent you're still writing them, first of all, to your employees, only creates a culture of fear and intimidation. You know, the great majority of your, of your employees for the city think you're writing this stuff about them as well. That's number one. Number two, you know, Ms. Greenman, at that meeting that I attended, talked about incompetent employees that the city's attorney had to do the work of the city's employees. Our employees are not incompetent. I've gotten to the, to deal with many a city employee, and they're a pleasure to deal with. We're lucky to have the folks that we have. And look, I have to tell you, the, what this, you all, every meeting complain about the prior lawsuits and the cost to the city that the prior administration has lodged you with. But I know you've all made many a comment about Mr. Loicono and Ms. Heck being incompetent or not doing their job, but an email like this, the, suggests that the reason you're looking, you were complaining, despite all the comments about them not doing their jobs appropriately, you know, suggests that really, that all that really related to you wanting to get rid of them, because you thought they were going to catch your own inappropriate or illegal activity. The, so, I mean, look, the, the, this is not respectful to your own employees. You may have.
Excuse me, Mr. Rodriguez, did you, let me just go back. Did you say "our" illegal activity?
The only, look, administrations come and go. I'll explain my.
Correct, I just wanted, I just want to comment on it one point.
I'll explain my comment to you. The, the administrations come and go. People, the, you know, people, the, the, in the city, some of them have our civil service and have tenure in the city, and some of them do not. The administrations come and go, and they work with prior employees of prior administrations, despite whatever their loyalties may be, or whatever their political party or political affiliation. The, you know, the only reason that you have to worry about people being coiled snakes, and be concerned and have that kind of paranoia, to the public reading this email, the suggests that what you're worried about is that they're going to catch you in you doing something inappropriate. If you are doing your jobs legally and appropriately, it shouldn't matter who hired that person in the city, the, and what party they're from, the, or who the, they're friends with. And my suggestion to you is that, it's not to say that you personally are doing something illegal, but, you know, the, if you're not doing anything inappropriate, worrying about, you shouldn't have to worry about what dossier is being built on you. If you're doing your job, the, who cares what they're writing down or see you doing, as long as you're doing your job legally and appropriately, there's no reason for believing things like this about current city employees. That's my suggestion to you. Emails like this should not be written, the, about, you know, about the city employees, current or former. And all that suggests is that you're looking to hide something in what you're doing. The, that's what the public, the, at least this member of the public thinks about emails like this. You wouldn't have to write something like this if you didn't have something to hide.
All right, your, your time is up.
Thank you very much. Also, congratulations to the officer, Mr. Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. I, I just want to comment quickly on that. I mean, that, that basis was on a personal email by Mrs. Greenman, I believe, correct?
Ben, the, it was RoseGreenman@ESQ@yahoo.com.
Okay, so it was not a city email. That's her personal email. That's her personal opinion on something, speaking to two individuals. I don't, certainly not going to agree or disagree. That's her, she's entitled to her opinion, as far as I'm concerned, but to try to construe and mix the rest of the council as any part of that is, unless you have emails from the rest of the council doing something similar, I think that's inappropriate. I mean, you're trying to, you're trying to take one person's words and, and putting everybody in, in the same mix. Mrs. Greenman's entitled to her opinion. She gave up those emails, and in my opinion, they were transient-type emails. I didn't even know that they had to be given up, but never to say they were given up. But I, I just, I kind of take offense at us all being boxed into that one email, because that may not represent anybody else on the council's opinion.
Thank you for that comment. You know, I appreciate that, that it's not, that the, you know, I like to think you don't hold these sorts of opinions. But just to understand, the, all of you boxed the prior.
If you had an email from me saying it, you could, you could hit me with it, but you don't, and that's what, why I made my comment.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Gilbert?
Steve Gelber, 304 Clinton Place. Just real quick on, on, on Mr. Rodriguez's, as I'm sure you're aware, whether they're on city emails or they're on Yahoo or AOL, they're city emails.
And they were given up.
And.
All of them were.
Even if they were given up, they were relative to a city employee, so there's no saying that that wasn't city business. I mean, it was an email directly to her soon-to-be supervisor. It was a, it was a clear, it was a clear retaliatory, retaliatory from a member of the governing body to the future supervisor regarding political affiliations and his totally protected thing.
What I, what I meant to say or said was her.
Mr. Time Stopping?
Mr. Merrick?
Yes.
Is my time stopping?
Can I interject quickly on this?
Is my time stopping?
Stop his time, please, real quick.
Yeah, stop his time. Just want to advise the council that Ms. Heck has filed a notice of tort claim against the city that, that, that means that she's probably going to file potential litigation, so we advise you guys not to comment on any issues related to Mr. Ms. Heck.
And just for the record, I wasn't asking for comment.
I, I won't interrupt you. Let's, let me finish, sir. And then on Mr. Loicono, the city executed a separation agreement, which has been provided to numerous people in the public, and in that separation agreement, the city agreed to not comment on his employment with the city, so we advise council to speak on neither, neither subject at this point.
Proceed.
All right, and then just on the, what Mr. Salt had mentioned about my Oprah request being on their own ledger items at, at Mr. Scrivo's firm, Mr. Morris's firm, really? That's, that's, that's the ordinary course of business, and keeping me on my own ledger sheet for my Oprah requests, that's nothing more than harassment and intimidation, because all those numbers ever came back to was the attack dog going on Facebook and attacking me in the social media sphere for, for exercising my rights to submit Oprah requests. I'm, as far as I can see, I'm the only person that is routinely given their own ledger item on your bills for Oprah requests. So I'm just telling you that it's absolutely harassment, it's intimidation for Mr. Amorado, and I believe it to be actionable, so I'm going to continue to monitor the legal bills, and that's all, that, that's all I want to say on that one. Mr. Amorado, Mr. LaBrus, you addressed that for me. How are we doing on a city manager search?
We had, we interviewed five people. The last one, I just found out the other day, pulled his name out this week, so basically, we're done, so now the council has to make a decision.
Okay. When we do hiring of key people in this city, CFO, the city manager, when we appoint an interim city manager, when we hire an economic redevelopment officer, what form of background checks do we do on those individuals?
To stand, a lot of times, I, you know, I, I personally don't do a background check. I mean, we, for, we, we look through, we get their resume, we go through their resume, and, and hoping that most people are honest. We're hoping that's.
References?
References, correct.
Do you talk to them?
We talk, yes, we call them. Their references that are on there, we, we look at their, everything they put in their resume, basically, but we don't have them investigated, per se.
When you hire someone to a key position, such as an interim city manager, an economic redevelopment officer, I would think that would be a person, I'm not going to comment on his successes in business, whatever his previous past has been. However, I would think that it would be someone that has substantial experience in business, which Mr. Rotino's resume, whether it's relatable or not, he has experience in business. I would hope that you did some sort of background check into what his business successes and called references, and talked to people that he maybe worked with, and looked into the successes and failures of, of business. Because I did a very short search, and I was able to find things in the public domain that if developers, I mean, he's the redevelopment officer, if, if, if developers or other business people found them, it may make them question whether or not they want to be in a room sitting across the table and doing a negotiation with Mr. Rotino. Still waiting on a few more things, but the items that I do have, I'd be happy to sit down and talk to you about sometime in the near future. But I would hope that you, I would, I would hope, although I probably know the answer, I would hope that you know about them. But judging by everything that happened with Mr. Amorado, I'm sure that you don't. Just looking at a resume, and just looking at what they did for you during the election, is not the best hiring practices. I would really hope that you looked into Mr. Rotino's past, all of his businesses, and really knew what you were getting as a redevelopment officer. And, you know, just for, because I do have a little bit of things that I just don't want to come here and put, even to put on the internet on my blog. If you want to sit down and talk about them, I'm happy to give you some of them.
Thank you.
Because saying someone has a job at the county is a little different than some of this, so take that for what it is.
Thank you. Next, please. Beretto, how are you?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Joe Beretto, Poplar Avenue. Just a few quick things. One is, when are the meetings going to actually be televised on TV as opposed to just online?
We have in contact, Channel 77 and 45, I think they're two channels. We haven't discussed it with them yet, as far, but I'm, I'm in favor of it, because I know a lot of seniors cannot get on the internet, and I think it would be a good idea.
That's what I was going to say. Some of the people are having a hard time getting online.
Something we're definitely going to move forward and look into. I think they should be on the rotating schedule along with the Board of Ed.
Okay, and the other thing was, we mentioned about. Okay. And the other thing was, you mentioned about filling up some of the potholes. Are we going to go section by section? Do we know yet? Or is it going to be on, as people call in? I remember a couple of years ago, whenever we saw a big pothole, we'd call in and then they went and-
Because the hotline list, that's getting probably hit first because they get called in, so we respond.
Okay, because the one concern I have, I'm right up the street from the school, from Fairmont Middle School. There's a huge pothole where the crossing guard has the kids cross.
They'll have it fixed tomorrow.
And the guys have to literally either go, if they go to the left, they're going to hit oncoming, so they go to the right, and when the kids cross, right on Grand and Fairmont, right before the crosswalk. And the crossing guard is there. It's a huge hole. The other thing, Mr. Mayor and Council, I think in the times that I've been up here and the times we've met in different places, I've always been very cordial, very not adversarial at all. However, two weeks ago, at our Little League, at the introduction of Little League, it was a beautiful morning, beautiful day, had by all. It was great seeing everybody, you know, pitch, and, you know, we joked around and so on. However, I do take, and we discussed this, some offense to being belittled and embarrassed by Mr. Bataglia there and then just having him walk off without waiting even for a response. And kind of just left everyone hanging there. Mr. Sims, you were there and you remember, I, you know, discussed that with you as well. And if it was just a matter of wearing badges, we all did it last year. And I don't think there was no harm, no foul with that because everyone here did that last year. To be singled out, you know, that day in front of people, in front of people we were just talking, we were talking about baseball, actually, I thought that was wrong, that was unprofessional, and it was inappropriate. And would you care to respond, Mr. Bataglia or anybody else?
Not really.
Okay, because here's the other thing. Then when I sit down, I don't want him to respond at the end of the meeting where I can't say anything back.
Point taken.
Because I have an issue with that.
But I will be, I don't remember last year, but I do know in the past, it was a rite of passage with me because I walked in there first year running for council and had my badge on and my, and they were like, uh-uh, and I put them away, and that was part of it. But there is an ordinance against it in municipal parks in the city of Hackensack.
And I wasn't aware, and as I discussed with you-
Yeah, and that's, you know, it's, and-
And I actually didn't move around. We were there in complaint.
Guys always run against you, so it really didn't make any sense to me, but, you know.
No, but that's what I'm saying. But I just didn't like being singled out and then have him walk away, and we're just like, what? And that's why I want to give him the opportunity now, why I was singled out.
Mr. Baretto, I was joking with you. I was laughing, and you were laughing too. That's it, you know? I was not serious about it or make a big deal about it. So what is it you make a big deal now? I say, Mr. Baretto, you know, you are running by yourself, where at least you got a badge in a park. And that was it, that was it.
That's not what you said. You actually didn't say, you don't mix this with-
No, 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 no. That was it.
You said that. And then you pointed out Mr. Sims and said, when I said, well, it's funny because you have a team, you have a team that you're sponsoring, and you said that's on him, and you pointed to Mr. Sims. Mr. Sims, you recall that conversation I had with you? You pointed at him that day and made that comment. All I'm saying is, Mr. Mayor, I'm not here to do this. That's what I'm saying. I just thought that that was wrong. We were talking-
This is what it is. Your point's taken.
Okay, that's all. And I want to continue to be cordial. I'm not here to go at anybody. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Thanks, Joe. Good Williams?
Good afternoon, Council. I'm back with you again, Mr. Mayor.
How are you?
I'm doing bad. The last time I was here, a few times I hear you said I had a problem with the buses. You said that was a zoning problem. I went through the zoning. The zoning declared that it's enforcement problem, and they said to come back to the council. I gave them pictures of everything that was going on, and they said I only had 42 days or 45 days to answer when they put the buses there. I never got the right information. I was always given all kinds of papers and everything. They said it was issued 15 summons. I think if I recall, they said Mr. Baretto said he did this under oath. He did not. At least I only got a record from Oprah of three summons. And every time I go down there and follow under Oprah, I always get something different. On the other night, when I went to the zoning board, it was a false. They made me look crazy. And every time I go in, I like to think, Mr. Rotino, he helped me get the information that I needed. And I also went to the state of New Jersey and got all kind of information that I needed. And I like to ask one other question. The lady, Ms. Hirsch, what does she work for, the city? Or she work for Lakey Bus Company? Because she kept cross-examining me for Lakey. To me, Lakey should have had an attorney here. And the other thing is, Al Baretto, whenever I need information, he didn't give it to me. All kind of stuff was done. And now when I come back to you, they say, so I'm back to you again. They says, so zoning, not a zoning, but a code enforcement, and also supplied them with pictures of what it looks like in the morning time. And maybe you could help me. They said, as a constable, I filed so many complaints under the building department, nothing ever happened.
What exactly are the violations at this time, Mr. Williams?
It's not, the same as was before, the buses. Right now, tonight, if you go by there, there's about 50 buses.
No, I'm well aware of the buses.
How many buses?
I said there's about 50 there tonight. And when we came to the meeting last week, there was maybe about 16 or 20. But afterward, they got their variants. They said they got their variants. Go ahead.
The zoning board, I got a memo, and the zoning board did listen to Mr. Williams' appeal at a courtesy to the mayor and council for sending them over, even though it's passed the 45 days. They made a determination that no large buses could be kept there, just the smaller buses not to exceed 25. They also require, they're going to require Lakey Bus to put stealth fencing so you cannot see the buses, like the clear wire fence that's there now has to come down, like a solid fence has to go up to block the view. So it did make some determinations to make the situation better by capping the number of buses at 25, which was the permitted use, by making sure that they're all the smaller buses, and also to have the stealth fencing go in to hide the situation or the view from the general public as they go by. So they did hear the appeal. They found that it was a permitted use there. I think that covers everything that they had, et cetera. Mr. Williams?
No, under the, with the Disclosure Act that they gave me, you told me I had to get under Oprah, you asked me for everything. I gave you everything that I had, but when I requested, I didn't get it. They came up with something I didn't even know about, some kind of new something that they said the state uses as the introduction of a terminal. I always know you go to Webster for an introductory, but he says no. I don't know. I never heard that.
That someone was there, Mr. Williams, a witness that he brought, and they tried to declare the bus depot a terminal, and they used Webster's dictionary, and they said that's not the proper terminology that you would use in the zoning. There's, I guess, a state book of definitions, or the city attorney may know better what it is. But, and in there, it said the storage of buses and passengers and whatnot. Since they weren't picking up passengers there, it didn't really fall into a depot, so it was permitted, yeah.
It's a storage facility.
Right.
You said, but what is it? You asked me before when I gave you the information, a terminal. We had the definition of a terminal. You agree with that, I think, but this is the runaround that I get, sir.
I don't recall agreeing with that. I mean, the terminal would involve picking up and discharging of passengers, like when you go to the bus terminal or the regular bus terminal like down on River Street. I look at that as it's a storage facility, and they're allowed to store 25 now? Is that the new agreement?
Well, that was always the cap, but they always went over. So every time I saw, every time, yes, Mayor, every time I've gone by there and I've contacted Mr. Baretto and told him to make sure it's enforced.
Williams, if they kept the bus fleet at 25 parked there-
No, sir. No, Mr. Mayor.
I'm asking you, if they did, would you be okay with that, with the new fence?
No, sir. I would not because you know what?
I can't see, I mean, what you're basically asking is you want the bus company gone from the parking lot, correct?
Well, listen, there was an ambulance company, there's a cab company, there's, for cabs, it said 55 cabs. You put 55 cabs, and there's a plumbing company, and there's a body shop. Where does all these-
But it's an M1 zone, I believe.
It's an M1 zone, but they said the other night, it's, M1 is for light manufacturing.
Yeah, but it also allows these uses, I believe. I mean, if it didn't allow these uses, they wouldn't be there.
No, I don't, but I don't agree with you, sir, when you say it didn't allow. It says M1 zone and light manufacturing, but you're making an M1 and an M2. If that's the case, why wasn't I given the same information they used on me the other night in the meeting? They hit me in the face. I still haven't got a copy of that. I never heard of it.
Oh, I don't, yeah, I don't know why they sent, I mean, this is something we cannot fix at this level. This has to be-
Well, they said it had to come back to you. The zoning said it had to come back to the council.
Zoning dictates what's allowed. Their zoning dictates the use, and all we can do is enforce what zoning allows. That's the only way I look at it.
But you're not enforcing it, sir.
Well, that's why I'm, I will check in again to make sure we do enforce it.
But why wasn't I given the information? Why I got to go through all these chains to get information?
No, we, well, the information, this should have never started here in the first place. It should have started at zoning from day one.
You know, I look at this like he says, I mean, Al Baretto says, he treats me like a brother. Okay, Cain and Abel were brothers. I'm just standing, luckily. You know what I mean? That's not true. Give me the information that I need in the beginning. But he'd never talked to me until Mr. Rotino got involved. That's the only time I had takes of papers if I was going to build a building.
Get him, Mr. Williams, whatever information he needs through Mr. Baretto.
Oh, it's not going to do me any good now. You've passed it.
Have we passed?
It's been passed. But they say he can't bring the diesel buses back there. I gave Mr., they got pictures.
We, when you say we, the council didn't pass anything.
No, I mean, the zoning board.
The 25 rule with the fence.
With the ruling for-
Twenty-five?
Twenty-five, boss.
But they got 50.
Oh, they're supposed to have, they're going to be down to 20.
And you should see it in the morning time. You can't get past.
I saw it.
Clerk, are we over our time?
Yeah.
All right. We're over our five minutes.
Okay. Over five minutes. I know, you know, you know.
It had to go back to zoning because that's where it belonged.
Oh, I wish I was white. Maybe they wouldn't do this to me.
No, that's not right.
Because they always do this to me, being black. You're white?
I'm white.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I should just add one thing. I believe under the city ordinances, the municipal governing body can sit and hear an appeal from the zoning board of adjustment. So that might be what Mr. Williams is referencing.
But we'd have to get the appeal from-
That is correct. He would have to affirm with file.
He'd have to appeal to-
Or with the Superior Court of the State of New Jersey. I believe he has either option or to do.
Just double check on that then.
Okay. Kathleen Sauer, 180 Watkins Street. There's two things that the problem lies with Mr. Williams, and he's going crazy. The first thing is code enforcement. This bus company has been there with the so-called permit, permitted use since 2012. Everything was fine before they came there, and the thing is, nothing has been enforced. There have been summonses issued, but they never went to court. They never, they never have been heard. Al Baretto at the end whispered that he had given 15, and in the meantime, Mr. Williams only was open three, and that's what he had record of. And when I called that very same day, the municipal court, they haven't been heard yet. So this company has not been penalized, has not been slapped on the face, has not gone to court, has been able to do whatever they want to do in the past, and that's why this neighborhood is in such a horrible condition. The basic thing that came out the other night that was very scary is that they're allowed to park on Railroad Avenue, and they do, they do so, and it prevents-
There is no parking on Railroad Avenue.
There is no parking, and there's no queuing because queuing is, you're not allowed to idle more than three minutes, so that's not allowed either. So what happens is that every, four times a day, they are blocking the motor, the right of way of the people going north on Railroad Avenue. And our emergency vehicles leave, they leave the, they go up Central Avenue. If they have to go north, sometimes they, lots of times, they turn right on Railroad Avenue, and they cannot pass because they're being blocked. That in itself is a big, big obstruction, and it needs to be enforced. The other thing is that the mess, the fence is already part of property maintenance. Their fence has been broken like that, never got a summons for it. The other day, the other night, when Mr. Guerreira, who was the chairperson to the zoning board, said he passed, they had taken a lot of buses out because they knew we were having it that night. And because they took them out, it was hiding all the junk that was in the back corner that shouldn't be there. Again, it's property maintenance with no summonses and no code enforcement. The thing that we were very disappointed with is the attorney, she seemed to be favoring the Lakey Bus Company and talking like we were the problem and they had the right or defending Mr. Baretto, which is okay. But they were two, the attorney, I think it's Ms. Hirsch, Mrs. Hirsch, or whatever her name is. She's the new attorney. We had, Mr. Mecca is very good. We used to have him. We did use him. He was planning and he did, he was standing in for zoning. I don't even know if she's a zoning board person. I know she's a real estate attorney, but that's beside the point. Anyway, the thing came up that in the column that we submitted as evidence, there was column one that says all the uses that were permitted in M1. And in column two, it specifically noted no buses were allowed, no, buses are allowed in M2. So for them to specifically note that, that means that they're not-
Kathy, is it M1 or M2?
The zone is M1, okay? In the column, our zoning codebook, on M2, it says buses are permitted in M2, which means they're not permitted in M1, because if it's void, that means it's not there. We got double talk that, oh, there's certain things that are permitted and aren't. They considered them commercial vehicles. But if that was so, it is a commercial vehicle. That was so, it wouldn't specifically say M3 zone buses are allowed because that was it. The other thing, it is a terminal. It may not bring people from that point to another point, but it goes out so it could pick people up and bring people back, and it does that four times a day. They don't use it to park them. They use them to move them four times a day. So if this went, I don't know if Judge Harris is still in. If this went to court with Judge Harris, and if we had somebody in the building department that was knowledgeable, this would have been defined as such.
And again, he can appeal this through the zoning board to us, but again, that type of language-
But we don't want to do that.
Terminal people has to be determined in the zoning board, not here.
Okay, but if this were enforced, if they had just 25 buses, he doesn't want to do that. He wants to bring all his buses from River Street, and he's also blocking River Street two times a day, and that's a county road.
I thought they were stopping that.
It needs to be enforced. It needs to be, they have, and they have to go on, they have to go after four when traffic isn't working with our constable, and they have to see that he's blocking because he did it today. We have to enforce it both parking-wise and both number of buses, because tonight, there are 50 buses there tonight. And they're just doing it because we're letting them do it. So now they're going to court April 30th, and let's see what happens. The first time they're going to be in court will be April 30. They've been there two years doing all illegal stuff, and nobody's done anything to them. They're doing this because we're allowing them to do it. And I'll tell you the same thing about Allen Party Rental. Allen Party Rental was a disaster when it was here in the Carver Park area and moved to South Hackensack, and they're picture-perfect. Because why? South Hackensack is not letting them get away with anything. So again, again, it's code enforcement. We need to do more with our building department, and that's where it lies. And they shouldn't be, they're just wrecking this neighborhood, both with all the stuff that they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
Mary Galberth, 304 Clinton Place, Hackensack. Mayor, Mr. Mangan, with that new title or the additional title, does the salary change on that?
Mr. Rotino?
No, it does not.
No salary change? And how about Mr. Amorado with his lighter workload? Does he have a salary change?
He's actually contracted by the council.
Is his salary chang-
Not at this time, not yet, no. Not at this time.
No?
No.
Lighter workload, but not a lesser salary?
I won't say that it's a lighter workload. They can write more for other people here.
And he's writing for you, Mr. Bataglia, or?
Yes.
Now, when you say not you or Deputy Mayor Kenneth Strino, that's your own personal thing?
Personal opinion, personal reason.
Your, no, your personal John P. LaBrus, what he's done-
If Ms. Vasquez from The Chronicle wants a comment from me, she will speak directly to me instead of having a, I don't know what you would call it. Usually when you have a PR man, he works with you on writing it, writes it, you okay it, whatever.
And he's just going to continue to get the salary he's getting but not working for you or Deputy Mayor Kenneth Strino?
At this time, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Regina De Pasco, Parker Avenue. I'm curious, why are no minutes online? None been approved. None online since February.
Um, well, I had to catch up on stuff that wasn't done, which was caught up. And I was working tonight on March.
Okay, all right. Thank you. The yellow line was painted on the curb by the hydrant, and nobody has parked there since. And I think it's a good idea with paving to include the stencils. at the hydrant. So it's an excellent idea because we lost it. We got a nice paved road, but lost those markings. Um, as far as the old news on the emails, I, I think that was lesson learned, and everybody knows about that. Um, a, another thing that came to my attention is the building department is telling people they have to do Oprah requests when they have gotten a notice of a, um, you know, so there's going to be a hearing. The point of the notice on the bottom, doesn't it say documents are available for, to, for inspection from nine to four-thirty? Why would the building department tell somebody they have to do an Oprah request when they got a notice?
Can you be more specific in what case that would, would happen?
Uh, no.
Just, I, I.
But because I just heard that it happened.
But I, it doesn't make sense.
Yeah, no, it doesn't make sense. The, the building department shouldn't be, somebody comes in with a notice, they should be informed. If somebody comes in with a notice of a hearing, planning, zoning, whatever, they don't have to do an Oprah request. That's not required, because those, those should be readily available. They're not something that's stored away that have to be, you know, looked up, copied, whatever. It's there, and the person can inspect them right there. Unless the person wants to make copies and take it home, then that's a different story. But if the person just wants to come in and look at the plans, whatever, as the notice says they can, the building department must let them do that. Okay? And it's, I've heard of, I only know of one occasion that it happened. That's why I don't want to single out one person, one, one, uh, one thing, but one's too many.
I'll check.
This whole thing with on Railroad Avenue, the buses, I don't understand. It's an M-one zone. What Mrs. Salvo was saying, the M-two, um, the district ordinance says for M-two, bus terminals and yards are permitted in S-two. And I still, I don't understand why this isn't considered a bus yard. Nobody's using that word, but that's in the M-two. And the parking, hey, everybody knows the quickest way to get across Hackensack is Railroad Avenue. You don't want to have a bunch of buses blocking that. If you, when I, when I need to get someplace, I'm running late for an appointment, Railroad Avenue is the way to go.
Hackensack Autobahn.
Huh?
The Hackensack Autobahn.
Yeah, yeah. The only part I run into trouble is getting across Central, but I manage. Um, so I, just asking to look into that because I don't understand that part of it. Um, I don't know if Mr. Williams is going to do a, uh, an appeal to the council, but, um, and this went before the zoning board already. And I'm not on that board, so I can say something about this. Um, but I, I do understand that M-two specifically says bus terminals or yards are permitted in M-two in addition to what's in M-one. Which would lead me to believe that bus terminals and yards are not permitted in M-one. But, um, I want other question. Have there ever been any reports from our constables?
Reports?
Reports.
To the council?
Yes.
No, not to my knowledge.
There is a state statute requiring it every month.
Constable give reports to the council?
Yes.
Interesting.
Yes. I found that interesting too.
I mean, in, I mean, the.
I can, I can let you know the statute. I had occasion to look it up.
And how old is that ordinance?
No, it's a state statute.
State statute, I should say.
Yeah, the state statute. Um, Clifton has an ordinance. I don't know that Hackensack has an ordinance. Clifton has an ordinance on it. But, um, the constables are supposed to report what they do.
Usually reports, I think, to our, um, police director, who was just.
No, the council appoints the constable, and that's who, from my reading of the ordinance, but I can get it to you if you, you want it, so.
Send it to me so I can read it.
Yeah. I, I had occasion to look it up, and I said, do our constables do that? And that's why, yeah. And that's it. Thank you. I didn't use my five minutes, did I?
Hi, Debbie LeBros, eighteen Brook Street. I'm here as a representative from Hiller School tonight to invite all of you to our Earth Day celebration on Friday, Friday the twenty-fifth. It's a big day at our school. Um, normally we send out invitations, be, for various reasons. That didn't happen this year. And so I'm here. It starts at nine AM. It ends at two-thirty PM. And we have assembly programs. We have stations that the teachers create about being conservationists and doing things to help save the earth. And we have, um, an exotic animal man who comes and talks to the kids about the animals that live in different parts of the world. So in the past, I know people have come. I hope that you guys could come. I think you'll enjoy yourself.
What time?
Nine to two-thirty.
Can we attend some parts of it?
Oh, you know how, yeah, most people just come and stay for, you know, fifteen, twenty minutes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else seeing none? Motion to close to the public, please.
Offered.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LeBros.
Aye. Thank you, everybody. Have a safe trip home.
Do we have anything to say?
Oh, I'm sorry. Hold on. Don't leave. I always forget that part. Mr. Bataglia?
I am really happy about wonderful news of our police department and about the kids. It was a wonderful day. About baseball and the police academy. And city manager give you all the good news about what we are doing in the city. Thank you for coming. Have a safe trip home.
Mr. Sims? No comment? Ms. Greenman?
Okay, uh, to your dad, the sore kids have gone, but I want to tell them that they're wonderful. And congratulations to them. Congratulations and, uh, felicitaciones. Why, did I say it correctly?
Felicitaciones.
Felicitaciones to Police Officer Vasquez. He's wonderful. And our police department is great as well. I want to bring to everyone's attention our wonderful library. And we have actually a bilingual English-Spanish program. It started on April third, every Thursday, ten o'clock in the morning. So please, if you know anyone or in touch, uh, with anyone who speaks both Spanish and English and have children who are between the ages of three and six, there is a wonderful interactive hour of stories in Spanish and English, uh, arts and crafts, and it's free to residents of Hackensack. I'm going to leave this at the table, so if you need a copy, take one. There is a whole lot of other programs for the children. It's, uh, there is tech time, uh, with the computers, chess clubs, robotics, video games, book discussions, Lego. They had a, um, meet the orchestra at some point this, just this past week. Uh, there's a preschool story hours, uh, a lot of different things. There is, uh, uh, theater, dance programs, arts and crafts. It's a great library, and we welcome everyone. Please come and visit. They're going to have a book sale sometime in June, so if you have books that you loved and no longer can accommodate, please consider donating them and raise money for the library. Thank you so much for coming. Good night.
Okay, uh, Officer Vasquez, is he still here? Did he leave? He left? Great job. Um, indicative of what our police department's doing. They've been doing a great job. Um, that's it, Class Two. You're one of our new Class Twos?
Yes, sir.
Awesome. We have Class Twos, which we, uh, Mr. Mordaga brought in. Class Twos are, uh, were brought in to help with our police department. They actually do, they are armed. They do carry guns. They turn their gun in at the end of their shift. They're a great help to the city in many different ways. They'd be walking the beats and doing a lot of things, and freeing up the time of some of our other officers can be used for other things. Uh, opening day in baseball was a great success. Kids look great. It's a lot of fun. I want to thank, uh, Councilman Sims for trying to catch my pitch. And I want to thank Mr. Suede for fixing the camera, so it looked like a pro player out there. Uh, youth academy. I got to go through the first day, then I went to third, or Wednesday, I guess they had the, uh, at the fire department, they had the, um, all the kids were at the fire department, but they had the rope, I don't know what you call it, the rope slide. It was a great day. They gave the kids lunch. The following day, they went down to Seagurt, uh, for the day, spent the whole day down there. Friday, there were, like, was mentioned before, like a bunch of different kids, when you go there Friday and watch them graduate, they, uh,
Thursday.
Uh, Thursday, I'm sorry. Thursday was graduation night. It, it's just so great to see the, the discipline, the unison, marching. It's, it's, you know, you, you sit there, you know. Today's youth gets a lot of, a lot of bad rap, but, uh, you know, these were good kids. They did a great job. Um, and, and that's about it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Need a motion to close?
Motion to close the meeting, please.
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LeBros.
Aye. Thank you.